Whereas, America's system of public lands includes parks, unique landscapes, forests, wildlife, refuges, historic trails, natural streams and wetlands, nature centers, gardens, and other landmark areas throughout the nation that individually and collectively represent irreplaceable national resources. And whereas, public lands provide locally accessible natural and cultural resources for environmental learning, wildlife appreciation, and recreation. And whereas, public lands promote civic ideals that include shared stewardship and recognition of public ownership. And whereas, shared stewardship requires the goodwill, cooperation, and active support of citizens, community, city and state officials, business leaders, children, and adults. And whereas, an alliance between private citizens and managers and community leaders improves the condition of publicly held lands for the greater enjoyment and enrichment of all Americans. And whereas, National Public Landstake, co-sponsored by the National Environmental Education Foundation, the Bureau of Land Management, the Bureau of Reclamation, the Department of Defense, the Environmental Protection Agency, the National Park Service, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the USDA Forest Service, has become an annually anticipated event for local participation on publicly held lands in Florida and Lake County. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Tavares proclaims September 30th, 2017, as National Public Landstake, and called upon the people of the City of Tavares and Lake County to recognize and participate in this special observance, passed and adopted this 20th day of September, 2017. Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item... We did that.
Yeah, we did the approval of each item.
I thought we wanted to add the request.
That's what I thought, but they said they'll change it, so I...
Which one?
Well, the requests are continuous that we got from the applicant for item...
When I asked about three more items, I'm gonna have to change this.
I thought that was gonna be taken up at the time that the item came up.
We can do it anyway. It's a matter of... You should consider that request if we give that particular time.
I thought that would be handled as part of that.
All right, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Five, which is the swearing-in by City Attorney and disclosure of ex parte contacts.
Thanks, Mayor. We have two items on the agenda, two items on the agenda tonight that are quasi-judicial in nature. One is the rezoning petition for, I guess what we call the Shirley Shores or East Shirley Shores annexation and rezoning. And then we also have a land use complaint amendment for an area. And those are Agenda Items Nine and Ten, Nine, Ten, and Eleven, Mike, is that right?
Seven and Eight. Seven and Eight.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Seven and Eight.
Yes, well, Six, Seven, and Eight. So if you're here tonight to speak on Item Six, which is Ordinance 2017-09, a large-scale future land use amendment for city conservation land north of Lane Park Road, west of Camp Road, or if you're here tonight to speak, get testimony on Tab Seven, which is Ordinance 2017-10, annexation and rezoning of 222 acres, or Tab Eight, which is the large-scale future land use map amendment for that three seventy ordinance, then our rules of quasi-judicial procedure require that we stand and be sworn in at this time. So if you're gonna testify, you think you're gonna testify, stand and we will swear. In your right hands, everybody's gotta vote. You solemnly swear or affirm, testimony given is costly, the truth is hell-truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God.
I do.
Thank you very much. When we come to the podium, you'll, the clerk will have you put your name and address and contact information down when you speak. Our rules also require that the council disclose any ex parte mutations that you have regarding either of these land use hearing matters. Ex parte communications would include communications written or verbal telephone calls or emails. So if you've had any, we'll just go down the line, because I know there are a lot of people here that are interested.
Phone calls and emails.
Okay? Phone calls and emails.
Phone calls and emails, and face-to-face conversations.
Same here, phone calls and emails.
And I've had phone calls, emails, and face-to-face.
And would it be fair to say that those are from, I know it's probably difficult to have every one, but you had some that are in opposition and some in favor, or vice versa, all in opposition? Can you characterize the nature, start with that?
Yeah, one of them was indecisive to me, just wanted me to keep an open mind, and a couple of them were against, and a couple of them were for, so.
And, Troy?
I'd say mostly communication was mostly opposed, probably had one that was feeling indifferent.
And?
I've had mixed.
All right.
Yeah, mixed too, you know, annexation was one thing, rezoning was another, and some kind of...
All right, and any specific?
I've had, all were opposed except for one.
Good.
And one was, you know, keep an open mind.
All right, and if you've got any written communications, you should of course be filing those with the clerk. Thank you.
Right, Agenda Item Six, reading of all ordinances, resolutions into the record. City Clerk, Susie Novak.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two resolutions at the second and final reading, Resolution 2017-09, a resolution adopting the final military rate of 7.0000 to the City of Tavares, Florida, for Apple and Texas for fiscal year 2017-2018, setting forth the percent by which the military rate is greater than the World Act rate. Resolution 2017-10, a resolution adopting the final budget for the City of Tavares, Florida, for the fiscal year 2017-2018. We have two ordinances at second reading, Ordinance 2017-09, an ordinance of the City of Tavares, Florida, amending the various comprehensive plan, future land use map 2020, providing for a change of future land use designation on approximately 25.35 acres of land generally located north of Lane Park Road, west of Camp Road, from county conservation to city wetland and conservation, CONS, providing for severability and conflicts, providing for transmittal, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance 2017-10, an ordinance of the City of Tavares, amending the boundaries of the city, annexing approximately 222 acres of land located west of Apopka, Oak Creek now, north of Lake Diane, south of East Shirley Shores Road, and east of Shirley Shores Road, rezoning said property from Lake County Agricultural A to Community Facility District CFD to City of Tavares Plan Development BD, subject to the rules, regulations, and obligations ordained by the City of Tavares Council, providing for an effective date. And we have one ordinance at first reading and transmittal theory, an ordinance 2017-11, an ordinance of the City of Tavares, Florida, amending the Tavares Comprehensive Plan of Future Land Use Map 2020, providing for a change of future land use designation on approximately 222 acres of land generally located west of Apopka, Oak Creek now, north of Lake Diane, southeast Shirley Shores Road, and east of Shirley Shores Road, from county rural transition to city suburban, providing for severability and conflicts, providing for transmittal, and providing for an effective date.
Right, thank you, Susie. Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Seven, the consent agenda. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or any disagreement with anything on the consent agenda? Counsel?
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we're gonna move on to number nine, public hearing. Oh no, we can't do that, that's the...
I'm enjoying it.
After five, so we're gonna skip number nine and come back to that. All right, we're gonna move on now to Tab Six. Mike Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 17-09 proposes a large-scale amendment to the Future Land Use Map 2020 of the Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is owned by the City of Tavares. Its 25 acres in size consists of two parcels of property located on the north side of Lane Park Road, west of Camp Road. The property was donated to the city in 1987 and is considered a wetland. Ordinance 17-09 would amend the future land use designation from county conservation to city wetland and conservation. On July 19th, 2017, the city approved the annexation and rezoning of the property from Lake County Agricultural to City of Tavares Wetlands Preservation Area. Site conditions, the property is currently a conservation area, no development will be permitted except nature trails, which may include the permitted construction of boardwalks. There is no water and sewer in the area, and it is not expected that this property will have any impact on city services for water and sewer. The Department of Economic Opportunity has reviewed the proposed amendment and identified no comments related to the important state resources and facilities. The Planning and Zoning Board on June 15th voted unanimously, lead five to zero, to recommend approval of Ordinance 17-09, and the staff recommends that City Council moves to adopt Ordinance 17-09.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? How'd you like to move?
Yes, very beautiful, old sort of each property there, so I move to approve.
Second.
Right, we have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. All right, we're gonna move on to Tab Seven, Ordinance 2017-10, Mike Fitzgerald.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I think I would like to call, before I give a presentation on this, I would like to call the applicant to the podium to address City Council.
Yes, sir, state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, Mayor, my name is Jimmy Crawford, Attorney 1201 West Highway 15, 1201 West Highway 15 in Claremont, and I represent the applicant of the annexation of the land use plan amendment and the PUD that is proposed for what they call the Shirley Shores property. Late last week, we wrote a letter requesting a postponement of this for 30 days, and it's really for several different reasons. My office was down for a week, we were five days without electricity, and a day getting the computer, actually, two days for my computer, getting them all back in order, and we fell significantly behind on preparations for getting this ready for what we know is a significant hearing for the city and for the neighborhood. I also have been in contact with some of the neighbors and wish to have better conversations with them as to exactly what we're asking for, what they need, what we can do together to eliminate some of the conflict. Therefore, we are requesting a postponement of, well, I call it 30 days, but it's to the October 18th. We do understand there's re-advertising and re-notification costs that the applicant has to supply for that to happen.
Okay, well, that's good enough for now. I've got quite a few people who would like to speak, so...
Yes, Mayor, if you have any questions, plus let us know.
All right.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Fitzgerald, you have a request to postpone or to continue. Can I hear you? You have a request to continue from the applicant, unless there's a motion to continue, it won't continue. If you want to discuss a continuance, there should be a motion of a second to continue this to the time certain is requested, and then you can have, entertain discussion among yourselves, or you can entertain a debate on the continuance only. Question, that we know this, if there's a motion to continue, then the debate will be on whether or not the matter should be continued, not on the merits of the zoning application. So, but to get the motion, or to get the request to continue on the table, someone has to move it and second it, or there's no action to be taken.
All right, counsel, do y'all have any questions for Mr. Williams, or...
Well, I just got two. One is a clarification, the reason why we're postponing it until October 18th is because we will not have an October 5th meeting, or October 4th meeting, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right, and counselor, when you're saying continuing your meeting, postponing...
Well, postpone or continue, I think the motion, probably under Roberts' continuance, but if...
Right, I didn't wanna make Rob's...
We give this postponement to a time certain, and your LDRs are, require, it's not really required by state law, but our specific city LDRs also require that if the postponement is accepted, the request of the applicant, that the applicant has to pay the costs of re-notifying and re-advertising the hearing, just to make sure that everybody gets due notice of the new hearing topic.
But if we're voting, so we're just making a motion, we're not voting whether or not we're going to do it, because...
That's right, make a motion first, unless there's a motion to consider the continuance, no action takes place, and the zoning hearing goes on. You have a request to continue, you want to consider the continuance, you have to make a motion to lay it on the table to discuss it.
So yes, the motion would be... So, counsel, how'd you like, counsel, how'd you like to move?
I mean, that's a tough one, because that depends on, that's out there, but it's also, we did have a hurricane come through, so that's what's kinda going through my thing too, because it is still a fair request, and yet I know it's been on everybody's mind for a while as well, so...
And again, and again...
I'll make a motion so we can discuss it, so I'll make a motion that we grant the continuance.
And I'll second that motion so we can have discussion.
And I think it's a fair thing to do, with the circumstances that have happened over the last week.
Okay, so we have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Now you can have, now you can have discussion.
So I don't have to make this a motion, we can go right into discussion, let the people know, yeah, we'll vote this out.
Sure, you can do whatever.
That's what I'm...
You can discuss among yourselves as a council, or you can entertain an audience input only on the motion to continue, not on the merits of the zoning hearing until we get to the zoning hearing itself. If you grant the motion to continue, it will be continued until October 18th. If you deny the motion to continue, then we'll have the zoning hearing on the zoning matter at second date.
Okay, counsel, so I think what I'm gonna do is, let's go ahead and hear the audience, and we'll have our discussion. I also want to remind the audience, this, if you're coming up to speak, please don't be repetitive from the person before you. If you agree with the person, if that's exactly what you were gonna say, then just say, "I agree with the person before me." And also, do not discuss, we're not discussing the case itself, we're just, the merits of the case, we're just discussing whether or not we should allow him to postpone it, or, you know, allow him or not allow him. And I'm gonna give each of you about two minutes, and I do time, and I will call the next person. So first, I'm gonna call Randy Strode.
You don't comment this time.
Okay. Bill McEachte.
Thank you, Mayor, we're really close, it's McKetney, but everybody gets it wrong, so thank you.
Counsel, I...
Can I ask a question, are we just discussing the delay of the meeting, or can I talk about what I feel are the merits of the project?
No, that is not in discussion now.
Just a delay. It's just a delay.
Yes, sir, that's all we're discussing, is whether or not we should allow them to delay the meeting, we're not discussing the merits.
You took it, we know my sales. That's a decision for the council, I don't expect an accident, you make some, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Lou Ronca.
I'd like to divert to Don Care, who would speak for me.
All right, Don Care.
Thank you, Mayor, and town council, I really appreciate the opportunity to read a statement to you. Number one, the lawyer for the developer on this project requested to postpone the hearing for another month because according to the letter, it's Hurricane Irma delayed his team. I received an email from Mr. Crawford shortly after a meeting I had last week that said he would like to defer it, but he didn't mention anything about Hurricane Irma. What he mentioned was two other items. I'm gonna skip ahead to, now I use my two minutes. Basically, what has happened here is, there are two items that are critical. He says he wants to get together with the neighborhood, which we are all in favor of. The second thing, and you have copies of this, or Mr. Gurrie should have distributed them, is that he's claiming that the owner of the property did not actually correctly sign the application, and that is true. The application was signed as owner by this developer who doesn't own any of his property. He's had multiple weeks in order to correct that situation, and I don't know if he's been able to. I have found out that out of the eight parcels in contention, there's four owners, and all four of them have the exact same address and the exact same contact person who lives in Tavares. So it's fairly obvious I'm being outlawed here. I'm not an attorney, this is the third time neighborhoods come before the city to inform you of the details of the development and have our voices heard. We came to your last city council hearing on September 6th, we're told by Scott Girkin, he appreciated our turning out, but please come to the hearing on the 20th and be heard. Now we need a delay because the developer claims they're not ready. I'm pretty sure that the people who were really busy during this hurricane are the people in this room who took care of us. You're here, and you're ready to hear it, I've had four weeks to get ready for this, I'm here, and I'm ready to hear it, and I would respectfully request that we actually hear it today. And I'd like to take any questions that you have, but I'd like to reserve the right to read one more short paragraph after your question.
Well, we are, your time is up, sir, so thank you. Mr. Malouf.
I defer to Don Care.
All right.
I have a two minute.
All right. If you'd like to come up and use your two minutes, feel free to, sir. I'm talking to Mr. Malouf.
If there's something...
The rulebook, I use plan five.
Yes, Mayor, Ms. Pittner.
Hello, I reside at 15825 April Circle, Tavares, Florida, and that is in Squirrel Point subdivision. And I am the Hotlairs Association President currently. It is fairly obvious that I am being outlawed here. I am not an attorney, this is the third time that our neighborhood has come before the city to be informed of the details of the development and to have our voices heard. We came to your last city council hearing on September 6th, and were told that, by Scott Girkin, oh wait, this is where it's gonna... My request is simple, if the city council has already decided in their minds that you're going to approve this annexation, and perhaps with conditions, please grant the postponement to give us time to lawyer up as well, so that our voices can be heard. However, if you believe that enough of you are still questioning if it is a good idea to annex this property at this time, please deny the request to delay. I am ready to present the case, and so is our neighborhood. The one condition I have for presenting my case today is that Mr. Crawford and the developer agree on the record to be bound to the decisions made by the city council today, and not pull another legal loophole, like objecting on the record, objecting on the record, and then appeal to the procedural basis of the vote against him. And I have researched some of this, again, I am not an attorney, but I know these players have been involved in this property development for over nine years. They've had way more time than any of us have had to prepare, and so I would like to see you make the decision to move ahead. I'm sure there's probably another project that would like the time on the October schedule, and we're all here once again. I'm sure that they're hoping that we will become busy with our lives again and not show up for the next hearing. But as you can see, all of us are here, and we are all ready, we all stand in opposition of the project.
Right, thank you. Vance Jokum.
Vance Jokum, I write the blog, FiscalRangers.com, 12619 Milwaukee Avenue, Paris. I've been attending the meetings, I'd first like to commend John Drury, and Mr. Fitzgerald, and Mr. Williams, they met with us, they explained some of the facts about how this whole process works, and I appreciate that. I think that I have been observing how these residents have been working, and about the only issue, if you decide to extend this, is I have time to make more videos on this, and I just uploaded another one today. So I would like to recommend that you do hear this today, because attorneys, as has been said, have had many months to prepare for this, and they should go ahead and make their case while the residents are here, they have prepared, they've set up, this is the third meeting now, and they need to get there, say, "Thank you."
All right, thank you, Vance. Ryan Cybernigle, Cybernigle.
Nothing to add.
All right, thank you. All right, counsel, y'all have any questions for...
We ask you.
Yeah, go ahead, you have two minutes, state your name and your address for the clerk.
Okay, my name's Deborah Mauer, 29246 Oak Creek Drive, Tavares, Florida. This is imperative to the safety of our county and our state, and this land, you guys are talking about time, time. Okay, how much time do you think it took for those cypress to grow? Do you not think that God's creation takes time? And now you're putting this through, and giving this developer more time to prove the reasons why it's okay to destroy cypress that save us from floods, us current residents that are sitting on sinking sand? You are responsible for my safety and the safety of us that are around the perimeter of the land. And who on earth is giving these people precedence over us that live here? You don't need the taxpayers' money, we need God's creation to save us from hurricanes and floodwaters and these things, and you guys just aren't, like, I can't even believe this is even up for discussion. I get the fact that everybody has a right to sell their land, but not at the expense of the current citizens, okay? And we pay tax dollar money, we pay a lot of money to live there, and it needs to stay. I declare it needs to stay agriculture, one per five, the way the rest of the central land is between Lake Apopka and Lake Oak Creek, which they spent millions of dollars renovating, which you guys will all throw away, all goodwill. So my plea, and I declare, that you do not allow any more time for this developer to destroy God's creation when it took millions of years to make it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald, or Mr. Crawford?
I'll go first, because I'm a little confused. I know, or I think, my developer has reached out and has requested that he gets a continuance so he can reduce the amount of home in the parcel, and that he can talk to the neighbors to make sure that their requests are at least listened to and incorporated?
Yes, sir, I believe that the applicant has been sensitive to a lot of the input from the residents at the P&amp;Z meeting, Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and wants to take some time to address some of those concerns properly. some time to address some of those concerns properly, and is therefore asking for the continuance.
So let me see, I understand that. The request is so that he can then go back to the residents, because he understands now what their situations, and want to reduce the amount of dwellings within a certain amount of property. Is that what I'm getting?
I think you should ask the applicant the question, Mike.
Did you get that?
Yeah, I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant as far as what changes they want to make.
He has a question.
He has, Councilman, for me, right?
Yeah, his two minutes are up, right? Our guy can't talk, but he gets to come in. Not as the applicant, ma'am.
Yes, we had originally submitted a plan that showed 100 lots. We don't want to build a 100 lot plan. We want to build a 64 lot plan that is out there. So we were in the process of revising that and re-submitting it when the hurricane hit. It caused us a delay for getting going. So we don't want to reduce it beyond the 64, but we want to cement that and make sure that we're legally bound to not go beyond the 64. And I don't think that's the only concern. They also have traffic concerns and driveway concerns, and we'd like time to meet with among those as well.
I lost my two minutes. Now that I've heard what he has to say, I'd like to speak.
Come on up, sir.
Thank you.
This only has to do with the continuance. It has nothing to do with the lots or the lot sizes.
It's all it's going to have to do with.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
If he wants to meet with the homeowners and the residents, they're all here right now. We're going to talk to this whole thing. There is no reason to continue this thing any further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's talk. I think, let's go ahead and talk.
We got a motion in a second.
Are we all done? All right, now we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
So just for the audience perspective, the next two items have been postponed until October, okay, until, what's the date?
Seventeenth, is it the seventeenth?
Eighteenth.
October 18th. So the council will rehear this case on October the 18th.
I'm the lawyer up.
Mr. Drury, I apologize. Is there a room anywhere where we could go with one of your great people together when you go outside?
Will you just come to my house and talk to me?
Yeah. Come on, folks, let's go. They got a meeting to run. Thank you.
Hey, Bruce.
You used the right term, "run."
Okay, so we're going to move on now to General Government, Tab 9, the acceptance of a donated flag disposal box. Chris Thompson.
Mayor, Council, the retirement of American flag is a time-honored tradition and one that carries a great significance. The United States Flag Code outlines proper flag etiquette for everything from properly holding a flag to flying the flag correctly. The Flag Code also states that it should be destroyed with dignity, preferably by burning. The process and tradition of properly retiring an American flag requires finding a disposal location in your area. At one of these locations, the F.W., American Legion, and there's others, your American flag can be properly retired with a reverence that is entitled. Out of respect for our nation's flag and for the convenience of our residents, Freddie Melton, a lifelong Taverres resident, purchased a custom wrapped flag depository box and wishes to donate it to the city of Taverres. If accepted, this flag depository box will be located in the Freedom Flag Monument area. City staff will install and maintain the box, and appropriate organizations such as the Scouts will be given the opportunity to collect the flags from the box on a regular basis and dispose of them as outlined in the Flag Code. There's two options. One is to accept the donated flag depository box generously donated by Freddie Melton, and the other is to not accept it. If it's accepted, the cost is very, very minimal. We'll just pour a little foundation slab to secure the box on. It's found to be legally sufficient, and Freddie's in the audience. I don't know if you have any questions, but Freddie, there.
All right, thank you, Chris. Council?
It's an idea that my uncle gave me. He lives up in the Bushel, Georgia. And he, I saw it up there. Took a while to find, get everything together and find one, because you can't get it from the post office to family. So we ordered one, a life outlet. My wife treats it. And then we went to a gentleman over in Mount Dora, and he, we decided what the wrap was going to be. We had it wrapped, and I think they got a good location for it, so.
I think all the ranges of the military are there. You incorporated America's Sea Plane City by putting a sea plane in it. That's very, very patriotic. I will add that I met with you out there and with Chris to identify a location.
Yes, sir.
Next to the, where all the military are honored. I think we've got a great location if this council approves it. And as Chris said, we'll be working with the Boy Scouts to appropriately check on the flags and do what needs to be done with the flags if it's approved.
Thank you. Fantastic.
It's wonderful, Fred. Get that thing bolted down and in place. It's terrific.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? All right, motion passes five to zero.
A little bit easier than the last.
Mayor, would you like to have a picture later? Why don't we, hey, John?
Yeah.
Can you hold one sec? Let's have the mayor on the other side of that, and let's get that formal.
Let's make it warm up, please.
Push it around a little bit.
Want to get in?
Oh, I love it. Good idea.
All right, perfect. Beautiful spot. Beautiful spot. One more for the mayor. Perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. A little bit easier than the last thing. W.C. up. Yes. Going to more.
Okay, tab down. Approval of I.A.F. contract, chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. For the record, Richard Keith, the fire chief. And this is probably the least exciting item on your agenda tonight. So this is the renewal of the contract collective bargaining agreement with your firefighters, the firefighter union, Local 3245. So over the last few months, the management negotiation team has met with union negotiation team, and I would like to thank our management negotiation team, especially Mr. Perneer, who represented your council on there, and Mr. Drury, who was the chief negotiator. And we met on several occasions with the executive board representatives from the union local, Mike Kelly, who's the president, and Madison Leary, who's the vice president. And so we are presenting to you tonight the results of that negotiation. So you have a tentative packet there that contains part of the agreement, just the parts that change. So we didn't give you the whole agreement. So you'll see in your tentative packet there, the articles and the places where additions or deletions were made. Additions are, of course, underlined, and deletions are stripped through to give you that. Those strike throughs and underlines don't show up in the final product. So the salient points among these suggested changes are the union acceptance of cost of living adjustment increase of 4%, consistent with other city employees, the union acceptance of health insurance adjustments, consistent with other city employees, the mutual agreement to make no changes to the firefighter pension plan during this contract period, and this collective bargaining agreement will become effective on October 1, if you approve tonight, and will remain in effect for one year. So the options are, city council could accept the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the city of Taverres and the Taverres Professional Firefighters, Local 3245, as amended, and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement on behalf of the city of Taverres. Option two, city council could reject the proposed collective bargaining agreement and direct staff with alternative direction. So the staff recommendation is to move to accept the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the city of Taverres and the Taverres Professional Firefighters, as amended, and authorize city administrator to sign the agreement on behalf of the city of Taverres. So, Mayor, Council, I'm here for any questions. And Mr. Perneer, again, thank you, Mr. Drury. Thank you for being a part of that negotiation.
Council, any questions for the chief?
I don't have any questions for the chief of the community for Lori. It would still affect our budget if we were to approve it, correct?
Although I would think this discussion could include the health insurance and the pension.
It would only affect the budget if we were to vote it down.
So Chief, it sounds like our hardworking firefighters that we appreciate so much are being treated just as well as our hardworking staff that we have here in the city of Taverres. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Please, Mayor.
All right, sounds wonderful. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the collective bargaining agreement as it is.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Tab 11, Irma post-storm update. John Drury.
I had hoped to put together an update that was more robust, but quite frankly, told myself, every time I try to document what's happened over the last eight days, you get pulled, and you're actually still working storm. So this is a very brief update on where things have been and where things are, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Before I show some photographs of some of the areas that I saw going through the storm, I'd like to point out a few things about the storm and in preparation of it. It begins with the red book that every department has, that Richard puts together for us. Richard Keith is our emergency management director for the city of Taverres. He puts together an emergency response plan, a form of a red book, and each one is tailored for each department, and that is the beginning of preparing for a plan. And that book was done two, three years ago, and it's updated annually. So every department has the book, goes through it, updates it, and gets ready for the plan. It then goes into weather reports. Richard Keith was very diligent on giving us all the weather reports, spoke to the council, department heads, helping us keep an eye on where this storm was and where it was going, and kept us up to speed so that we could begin preparing as we needed to. And then activating the emergency operations center that the county runs, designating three people to be our liaisons there. And those three were Bob Tweety, our economic development director, Buddy Lutcock, who is with the fire department, and Chris McCorman, our code enforcement officer. These three volunteered to do 12-hour shifts at the EOC for multiple days. That then turns into 24-hour shifts as you ride out the storm there as well. They are the liaison that we call out in the field to get updates and to get assistance from the Red Cross, the sheriff's department, and everything else that's there. We then put our pre-storm activity program to place, and that's walking down everything, identifying which employees are going to ride out the storm, and establishing a shelter, which this year was at Taverres High School. Placement of employees that are going to ride out the storm. We identify all the employees in different departments that are going to ride out the storm, notify their families that they are going to be here. We had storm riders in the fire station, obviously, storm riders in the police department, storm riders in the city hall, storm riders out at the utility department, and storm riders at the public works department. These folks spend the night in those locations so that when the storm passes, they can immediately get out without worrying about getting to the city, get the equipment, open up the roads to get emergency vehicles to the various houses and various businesses that need them. The mayor's reverse 911, call out all citizens working with us to notify all the citizens what they need to do to prepare. Sometimes citizens are in a rush, and they think about water and things like that, but they forget about fuel, they forget about cash, and what numbers to call if they have problems. And so the mayor does a reverse 911 call. Then there's the storm event which occurred. And then obviously, we responded to all the, to the storm immediately after by opening up all the roads. Traffic lights were out. Lake County manages those. They did not have enough generators to keep them going. So we began lending our generators, and then we began calling Mount Dora that had extra, and they lent it to us, and we lent it to Lake County. And our goal was to get all these traffic lights working so that we wouldn't have any accidents. Securing the seaplane base marina, which was hit hard. That was done with the police, our folks down there at the seaplane marina, and then obviously getting a salvage company, an environmental firm, to work together to begin mobilizing to deal with what happened down there. Well checks to our senior centers, Tiki Village, the Caroline Retirement Community, THI. Those well checks by our police officers resulted in the finding that some of these places did not have adequate water, sewer, electrical, or other facilities. And it was all hands on deck. We lent generators, we brought food, we brought water, and helped these folks out. And I think a lot of you know what went on there. Responding to 7/11 fuel fights of the pumps, there were quite a few altercations in different locations around the city. Police department was great on sending our officers to all the fueling facilities and tempering down the hot heads that were there while people were standing in line in front of each other. So that was handled very well. Responding to traffic accidents at intersections, quite a few traffic accidents, motorcycles and things like that, particularly where the traffic lights weren't working. So we're running normal traffic accidents as well. Updating citizens on Facebook, the website, and dedicated city lines. No, we have a police Facebook page, we have a city Facebook page, we have a fire department Facebook page, we have a city website. Keeping our website Facebook coordinators updated with various things that are going around the city. People get their news that way now. And I think they did a very good job on the four-way test before posting things on those things to keep our citizens updated. As I said, negotiating agreements with our mitigation efforts, activating the storm cleanup plan, designating the Caroline Field as a staging area for all storm debris, as we work through FEMA's rules. FEMA's got some tough rules, where they got to come in, bring their people in, audit what's commercial, audit what's residential, audit what you're bringing. instead of waiting a month or two until the FEMA auditors were in before you removed things. Working daily with Duke and CECO. Bob really gained a great relationship with the electrical companies that were in the EOC, and that gave us great access to getting things taken care of. You'll see downed lines, no power, here, there, everywhere. And that relationship helped us mobilize people, mobilize Duke and CECO to areas in which we had medical issues, senior issues, and things like that. Moving generators from lift station to lift station to keep the flow going. As you know, 50% of our lift stations have generators that are fixed there, 50% do not. 50% that do not require that we move generators, empty the lift station, move to the next one, empty it, and then as it starts to get filled, hopefully, we can get the 15 of them and get back to that one before it gets filled. I think we only had about two claims, two issues, where we just missed it by a minute or two to get back to that one lift station that needed to be emptied. I think we did a great job there, too. Shutting down City Hall and really just keeping those that were in immediate need to take care of business, that needed to keep things going. Cutting trees off lines. You'll see some photographs of that. Activating the whole FEMA protocol. You know there are private parks, Holiday Park, El Red Park. They don't subscribe to our garbage, do their own, but they were in need of garbage removal. And, you know, the way we roll in Taveries is we just go ahead and take care of it. People needed things taken care of, and so we took care of some of those issues. And then finally, during all this, and we all realize that we're going to be going eight days straight, people are going to get tired, the citizens are going to want to come out, and we should move forward with our arts in the park program. And Tamara was working behind the scenes, working with all the people that are needed to put the arts program back together, and we were able to pull that off as well. I'd like to go ahead and click very quickly through here. Mike, I'm just going to kind of talk about each photograph. These are ones that are new, they're kind of a random-ish order that I just pulled out together this afternoon. Hold on a second, and I just want to speak on each one back up. So it begins with our city council and the leadership. You all have given us the tools, the resources, and the funds to go ahead and take care of 15,000 residents. And without that, it never would have happened. Go ahead. This is one of our post-pre-storm meetings. We bring everybody here in this room. You can see the fire department, the police department, our mayor was there, and Richard is leading the charge on what we're going to be doing. Go ahead. This is the mayor doing a call-out with the IT. Reverse 911 is a little bit complicated. We are sending out calls to every citizen of Taveries who has signed up for our program. Means you're getting texts, emails, cell phone calls, and regular calls if you have registered with the City of Taveries, and you're getting that all the time as well. Go ahead. This is an emergency station. This is getting an update from EOC, working with the 14 that needs these kinds of updates. Go ahead. That's the EOC. If you look real closely, that's Buddy in the middle, on the right hand, and then kind of in the middle. But that's what the EOC looks like. Yeah, very good. Thank you. So he's representing us in that particular moment. As I said, we had three others that needed 12-hour shifts throughout the whole storm. Go ahead. That's Richard and I getting an update on the storm in his office. So we have people out in the field, like Richard, who are getting updates from EOC with our representative in EOC. Go ahead. This is people laying out their mattresses in City Hall. This is room two. There were mattresses here, there were mattresses in my office. So you've got a lot of people sleeping in City Hall, riding out the storm. We are, Mayor, looking forward to our new public safety complexes. This is not a hardened building. This is not prepared for those kinds of storms, but it's all we had at the time, and so that's what we needed to do. Go ahead. That's the path it took. We all know it went right up to the center of Florida. Go ahead. The eye went right over to Taveries, right down the center, so we got here pretty hard. Go ahead. And then the storm did quite a lot of damage. This is a tree that was split in half in someone's neighborhood. I think it's Breneur's neighborhood, actually. Go ahead. These are trees that are across power lines, across roads into Taveries. Go ahead. This is in my neighborhood. This is a neighbor's old pool screen. Ended up going through another neighbor's house, basically. Go ahead. More trees down. Go ahead. More trees just taking over. This is, oh, this is Mr. Breneur taking photographs right after the storm with me as we get a ride around. Go ahead. Flooding at Caskey's and flooding in other locations. Go ahead. Debris and fences damaged. Go ahead. Waves two, three feet still going. That windsock is straight out. More flooding over by the seaplane base. Go ahead. Traffic lights out. This was our biggest problem. Traffic lights out at night. When a traffic light is out at night, people can't see it, and that's where we had our biggest problems. It was imperative that we get all these lights operating. It took us a while and helped Lake County. It's one of the things we're going to talk about under a post-storm in a week when we all get together and look at things we need to do to help other agencies that don't have the resources that we depend on, like traffic lights. Go ahead. City Hall right back there, right where Diane is sitting, right above her head. Did they put it back up there or does it still have to... Yeah, well, we had water damage throughout this whole city hall, everywhere. We've got a remidiator here, emptied a few offices. You know, this building's just not set up for that kind of stuff. Go ahead. Damage, that was a, that's the Freedom Boat Club headquarters. That was a very large houseboat, as you all know, and it sunk. There's another boat on top of piling, and all of our docks are gone. Go ahead. We basically have a ball of boats down there, some of them on top of each other, and we are picking through each one with an environmental firm that is working with our salvage company. And we're doing this boat by boat, dock by dock. We'll be doing it over the next couple of weeks. Go ahead. This kind of just gives you an idea of the docks, the boats, all piled up. Go ahead. Go ahead. This is a private, there were a lot of private docks and boats that also were damaged. Go ahead. This is one of our generators, right after the storm, being deployed to a lift station. They're there for 10 minutes, they pump everything out, and that truck and that generator will be deployed to the next lift station, and the next lift station, and the next lift station. Hopefully, someday, we'll have, all our lift stations will have generators, but they're not there yet. Go ahead. This is our shelter at Taveries High School. This, when I first got here, it was early. There weren't that many people there, but over time, it grew to close to 100. And Councilmember Amanda Bogus was there volunteering. Go ahead. There's a picture of her. And then there's Sandy Gamble, who used to sit on this board, is now a school board member and one of our police officers and in the National Guard. And they ran that shelter for us very, very well. I will say that. Were a shelter that didn't have generators. Go ahead. Oh, that's my lost dog, hiding, founder. Go ahead. More meetings after the storm. Go ahead. It's up by Wind Dixie, some tree took out a major line. That was pretty bad. You can see the pole in the back just snapped right in half. Go ahead. That's just showing you the line down. Go ahead. Go ahead. Wendell, we all know Wendell. Here's a line down. He's taking a photograph of the identification for that pole. So there's five numbers, six numbers on that pole. He will get that to EOC, our people. EOC will get it to Duke, who's sitting right next to him. Duke will get it to their people, and then Duke will respond to that pole and take care of that mess there. Go ahead. That's where I slept, outside at home, because we have air conditioning. Go ahead. This is all of the Duke contracted people coming to Taveries. Just coming inside. As far as the eye can see, they were coming to Taveries. This is the intersection of 441 and David Walker, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of trucks in a line coming to Taveries to store power to this area. Go ahead. And then that's them just coming through. Go ahead. This is an area where we decided to take all the storm debris to the landfill would take forever. This is centrally located. We had this deal. There was a lot to do to clear environmentally, fence it off, put warning signs, everything you've got to do to get people reversed. But this is the beginning of our storm debris pile. Go ahead. That's a snap pole with a light. Go ahead. More snap poles. Go ahead. Snap pole, go ahead. This is our manager getting out of the truck and picking up debris along the lane. Go ahead. This is kind of interesting to me. I mean, you'll see he's being very careful not to touch that power line above, get in there next to that tree, pick up this debris, and not get electrocuted while doing it. It's a painstaking process, and that's why it takes a long time to remove all of this debris because of all the things you've got to look out. Go ahead. You can kind of see he's really looking at one thing and one thing only. And not going to touch that electric line and fill myself. So it's a very, you can see all the stabilizers that are put out, hold that truck up. It takes quite some time to stabilize a truck, set it up, get out there, clear the area, pick up the debris. That's why we're always harping on, you know, don't put your debris next to a tree. Don't put your debris in a long linear line. Put it in a pile. If everyone works together to put the piles in four feet away from anything, we can move a little bit more quickly. Go ahead. That's the pile growing, that's the fencing in place. Go ahead. Those are signs that the EP or FEMA requires. Go ahead. And then this is Wendell. We saw him earlier getting ready for the big event coming up this weekend, the art show. And he's jumping on the mower, cutting the grass, getting it ready, jumping from one job to another job, which is getting ready for the citizens to come out and take a breather from what we went through. Go ahead. This is the event getting ready with the banners going up for the big Friday event. Go ahead. And this is a seaplane on her cheek. They had, at the event, a fun activity there where you could get a little hand and seaplane on your cheek at the event. And this is kind of interesting. In the middle of our event this past weekend, there was this chalkboard, write anything you wanted that related to the art, to thanking anyone who helped you in a way during a hurricane. You'll see twice it says, "Our great city of Taveries," and then it says, "City of Taveries." So people thank moms, dads, others, and they thank the city of Taveries at the show for everything that we did. And I think that's it. Right? All right. So that's a quick overview of the hurricane, what we went through, and where we're at. I'm prepared to answer any questions. We'll have a meeting in, Richard, two weeks? Week?
Two is the... 29.
29. We'll let you know when that is, but that's a deep briefing with all of our team to really look at things that we could tweak, improve upon, and things like that. Any questions? Is there anything? All right, seeing that very quickly, does anybody from staff, just go around, want to add anything on Hurricane Irma? Mike?
We just had two reports of structural damage. One was a storage building, one was a home. So that's good news that we have not gotten a flood of folks coming in saying, "My home is damaged. What do I do?" I don't know if they're still locked up in insurance, but at this point, we think we've had minimal structural damage to anyone's home, and that's good news.
Okay, very quick. Lori?
I don't have anything, except thank you for everyone's support in filling out the many FEMA forms. We're going to have fun for a little while. We'll thank you for everything.
Very quick, Camara?
Yeah, just real quick, really appreciate all the staff, and I really appreciate the leadership team. John is very decisive. You guys know that, and it makes all the difference. Everyone is asking, and we've heard it over and over now, I'll talk to you like fast, how are you guys cleaned up so quickly? I can't believe you cleaned up so quickly. And it is amazing. It's being decisive. So very cool to be here during that time.
Richard?
John, just, for the Council, I'd just like to build on something John said, talking about the people that were here. And I had sent you all an email message, and I know some of you got that and you responded to it, but for the benefit of the audience who haven't seen that message, there were over 60 employees in the city that were here throughout the storm, the worst part of the storm. And all the other employees were at home waiting for conditions to improve so they could come in and go back to work. And it was just a tremendous show of teamwork, and nobody was whining, nobody was complaining. They all left their homes, they left their spouses, they left their kids, their pets behind, and came in to work for the city. And I'm just, I'm just so thrilled to be a part of this city of Taveries family. Thank you.
Lori?
I think one of the things that really impressed me was all of our meetings in this year. And I would look around and see the determination and the all-in faces, the expressions on everyone's faces. They're ready to go. They know what to do. Richard kept us in line, and John did, too. He came back over on the other way and emphasized that he said he needed to remember. And it was...